So the way that the technology of this new equipment is actually designed to use less water. So we sense every load and that load sensing is what is done to determine the amount of water and the white amount of agitation pattern for each specific load. So with that being said, we actually turn the load in the opposite direction. So when you turn the load in the opposite direction, we're turning it away from the agitator. We have a disc, a plate at the bottom, and that's what's creating a lot of our mechanical action. So we actually need the weight of the saturated load, not a floating load on top, and it helps us to get that turn that we're looking for. So actually floating the load works against us when we're trying to create the mechanical action and the turnover.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Any other questions? Could you give us your name again, I'm sorry?
Chris.
Or title?
Chris Britt, Regional Sales with Whirlpool and Maytag.
Okay, and the other gentleman?
David Hancock, Mesman.
David Hancock, Mesman. Okay, thank you. Thank you both gentlemen, really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do talk to the mic. The cameras. I've noticed some of the washers, I don't know if it's a defect, but when I'm doing a wash, the water is not completely draining. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. And we've sent someone out, sent someone out to fix it and it gets fixed and then a couple of days it happens again.
So what happens is, we use a suspended tub.
Is that covered already?
No, it wasn't. No, it wasn't. So with the new technology, we use a suspended tub. So if you, when the washer's empty, if you open the lid and grab the agitator, you can move the tub all around, okay? So with a suspended tub, one of the types of loads that it will struggle with is either really small loads or a load that has a bulky item in it and it's getting unbalanced. And so what happens is, if it gets unbalanced, it won't go into the high extract and that's why you're getting a load that didn't spin out and you're getting a wet load. So actually, the machine, if it didn't fall out, meaning have an F code and say out of order, then it just couldn't balance it and it didn't go into the final spin. So you didn't do anything wrong or the resident didn't do anything wrong, the machine just couldn't balance it and it couldn't go into the final spin. So that is one of the drawbacks of a suspended tub. But it shouldn't happen very much. I mean, one of the things, if you happen to be in the laundry room when a machine is basically going into spin and you can tell it's not going into the spin, it doesn't sound right. Pause the, to pause the cycle, press the start button for three seconds, it will pause it. Open the lid and more than likely you'll kind of see the load heavier on one side than the other. If you'll just kind of pick the load up, redistribute it, shut the lid, hit start, more than likely it'll, it'll spin it out no problem.
So if, excuse me, if after the wash is over, there's a bunch of water on the bottom, basically you have to kind of squeegee it out or is there a way to?
There's, without going into a diagnostic cycle, there's no way for you as a, as a resident to, to spin it out without literally going through a new cycle.
So once you do, once you do a new cycle, like automatically?
It's reset. If it didn't take itself out of order, then the next person that uses it is no problem, which is, you know, like you said, you've washed a load, it had a lot of water left in it, didn't spin it out, you called them, they've come and then it seemed to be working fine.
Right, for like a week and then?
And it spent, now. And, and David did notice, we use, oh my gosh. Not the service guy, remember, just the sales guy. Oh my gosh, I've forgotten. Oh, we use an actuator and the actuator is down, you could have answered that for me, Dave. And the actuator's actually reading the, the motor speed and it's sending it to the, and the tub speed, excuse me, and it's sending it to the board. And if you have a machine that is constantly not spinning out, there's two things that Mesman will do. Number one, they'll actually do a calibration cycle on the machine. So with a calibration cycle, basically it's setting the machine back to zero because if you're getting a machine that's not spinning out, it's, it's getting a bad reading on the motor, on the tub speed. And so when we do a calibration cycle, it's, it's kind of like resetting the scale. So if you can imagine back in the days when, when you would bake a cake and you, and you used, and you put in a half a cup of this and you had to zero out the scale before you put in a, a whatever, of the next ingredient, it's the same thing. So that's the first thing they'll do is actually run a calibration cycle. It takes about three minutes for them to do that. Actually, once they start it, it, it does the cycle its own. The tub has to be empty, but it's resetting the machine. If that doesn't fix it, they'll go to the actuator and they'll actually replace the actuator. So I can tell you, if you're, if you have a machine on your floor that is consistently not spinning out a load for you, that definitely needs to be reported and so that they can, number one, do the calibration cycle. Number two, if that doesn't address the issue, they'll, they'll replace the actuator. That, that has been something that we've seen, not a lot, but we've seen it enough to know that's what we need to be looking at. Yes, ma'am.
At the end of the Maytag warranty where you guys stop coming here on site, is there, is part of the contract to teach, I think it's maintenance probably taking over preparing and heating up, will there be any training to the, whoever that maintenance guy is?
That can be arranged with the management facility.
But it's not currently part of that contract?
Right now you have a one-year free service and you have five years on the parts on this machine.
So no, it's not part of the contract?
Well, I, I. Go ahead.
But I was asking him, if he's able to teach like George to be able to reset the washer and dryers which are seen too hard.
Because after that first year, it will be our responsibility and?
Well, also if we offer a service contract, that would be for service, you know.
So what I hear is a no answer to this?
Well, I'll say this, I mean, that's between the property and our distributor as far as what they do service wise beyond, I can tell you, I mean, Mesman is one of the few distributors that actually gives a one-year warranty on labor, which is phenomenal. So, but the diagnostics on the Maytag machines by far is the best across the industry. So for 10 plus years when I worked for distributors, I sold Maytag all those years, but I also had access to other brands. I can tell you, the diagnostics on the Maytag machine is phenomenal and it's very, very easy to work on. The machine tells you through the diagnostic fault codes what's wrong with it. If you can read, you can actually figure out what's wrong with that machine.
But with George, someone else that know it?
It, it will be a very simple service training that they could teach anybody here, anybody to do it. I can tell you, I can be driving down the road in my car and not have a service manual in front of me and I'm the sales guy and I can walk through a diagnostic, any type of diagnostic cycle with anybody if they're in front of that machine. They're, they are very, very simple to do from, I mean, just like he, he was talking about the load not spinning out. I mean, there's a, basically a rinse and spin that you could do on the machine. You can make the machine do any step of the cycle literally by advancing it to that if you know how to get to it, which they do. And, and if that's what the property wants, to have somebody on site to do that, I mean, it's up to the property. But that, yes, literally at the touch of a button, they can make that machine do any step of the cycle they want it to do.
That's what we were promised, I was wondering what was going on, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there a matter of holding down buttons or a sequence of buttons you press and it goes into the diagnostic mode or is this something you have to plug in?
You have to have an access key to get into diagnostic.
And are we be able to buy a key or get a key or for the maintenance department?
We already have one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's pretty easy.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's card. Yeah, yeah, now I forgot, you have card here.
Okay, one last question.
Yes.
I just have one last question. You know, when you open the dryer, that you take out that little thing for to clean the lint?
Okay.
Is there some way to get underneath that lint to clean out the other lint that stays down there?
Not without, like a brush. I'm trying to think of what type of brush, a longer?
Bottle brush.
Yeah.
Would we have access to something like that? Would someone be able, huh? Let me finish my tender thought.
I'm trying to think of who would sell like a?
I'm asking because, the reason I'm asking this is because, you know, lint does stay down there.
Sure.
And, you know, eventually I wouldn't want any of that lint to accumulate and create a fire. See, I'm, you know, I'm bad because things go into my mind and?
You, you, you could work for Whirlpool, I can tell you.
No, I don't want?
That, that's one word we're not allowed to put in an email.
No, I'm not working this side of the world.
We can't even say that word.
Okay, but I'm just asking.
Yes.
Bottle brush.
And that, that, if, if you know that lint in that area is, is becoming an issue?
Well, you would have complaints because you got a clog supposedly drying and at that point the service man would do a cleaning of the lint cavity, which you resolve on that.
Oh, okay, that was my question.
How often?
How often does it appear?
After how much time do you think is warranted to have someone?
I'd say a yearly clean would be advised.
That was my question.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So I, I have two questions. So recently George acquired that card, right? So with that, what, once the card is acquired, is, George knows exactly how to recalibrate the machines with the card?
He has a reference code. There's another code that the machine provides and, you know, so he set up and took it as a sheet.
So in your opinion, beyond, beyond that, will that cover essentially all maintenance other than the cleaning of those, whatever they're called?
The lint cavity on the dryer.
With the exception of cleaning the lint. I mean, theoretically George could fix anything with that card. George is our maintenance guy.
As far as getting the machine up and running and that going out of order, it will not perform, so you have to erase the code, reset the machine. We always calibrated after we do that and then it's good to go again until something else might happen, you know, go out of order.
So beyond that, there's really, there's essentially nothing else other than using that card and knowing how to, you know, navigate the electronics?
Yes, because you have a card reader system, yet you're limited to that type of diagnostic card in order to reset the machine.
So to answer your question, George is trained then? I'm just going basically? Well, it doesn't require training essentially, it's just knowing how to read, right?
And I can tell you, I mean, we do?
If I understand that correctly.
We do, with our service manager, they do service trainings all the time for distributors. So if, let's say you guys are saying, hey, we need George training, okay? They can get Bobby down here, Bobby, I can tell you, Bobby Drummond, I hope y'all get a chance to meet him when he comes down here, there's none better. He's as meticulous as, as anybody I've ever seen. And when, when Bobby comes down, you know, he's, he's hard to travel with because he wants to find any other property that he can go see and look at the machines and make sure everything's okay. I mean, that's just the way he is. So I do hope you get a chance to meet him. But Bobby can come down with George and, and Dave and spend, you know, half a day or a day going through training or something like that.
What would the cost of that be?
That's, there's no charge.
We make an appointment right now?
I would at least let?
Want to get it done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I would, I would work through the warranty period, but you can certainly, I mean?
The only, the only reason why I say that?
Is because, you know, if a washer dryer is, is broken and, you know, hopefully you'll be able to come that day, but if you can't, people are, you know, they want immediate, immediate results.
You can talk with Bobby, the next time he's in the area, y'all schedule half a day or whatever?
Right.
And, and get him over here and, and George. And you can do that.
If you can't, let me know, would you like to be part of it?
Okay.
If possible.
So Gil, could tomorrow you arrange that, talk to Bobby, is that his name?
Yes.
Call whoever?
Yes, you have to schedule it, of course, you know, when it's available to come down and send it, it was, you know, be our, okay, with your schedule.
Bobby, Bobby handles the Southeast force, he lives in Atlanta. I would say he's probably down here every 30 days or so, somewhere in that timeframe in the area. So he could certainly work with Dave and George. George, who's the service manager here? To, to get on a schedule so they could spend some time.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. I'm gonna cut this short because you guys have been here, I think, quite long enough. Really appreciate your time and coming out here and answering all our wonderful owners' questions. We look forward to continuing this relationship as, as we move forward in using these great machines. So thank you again for coming out here and if anybody else wants to, you know, ask any questions, please ask outside the facility. But again, thank you both for coming.
Yeah, thank you for the time. We appreciate it.
All right. I'm going to call the meeting. Order now. Okay, it's eight twenty-five, I believe, twenty-three actually, twenty-three. And I call to order the meeting of September 29th, 2015. Carl, please call the roll.
Mira. Marcio. John.
Here.
Dove. Carl.
And call Hayden. So we have six present, one absent? I'm sorry, five present, one absent, I apologize. And now, I'm sorry? We have two absences and five present. So first item on the agenda is, okay, we had the laundry presentation obviously before the meeting because we couldn't be here, we apologize for that. We were having a closed meeting that took longer than we expected. So the first item on the agenda is actually my president's message. Could I please have everybody's attention? I hear some ruffling, rustling of papers over there, thank you. All right. Good evening, everybody. I have some good news today. I'm very happy to inform you that International Village has reached a settlement with the insurance carriers in the case we filed against them following their decision to deny coverage in one of the lawsuits filed by Elon Weiss. This was the so-called defamation lawsuit. The carriers have agreed to pay the association $60,000 to settle this case. This, thank you. This settlement amount covers all the association's legal expenses that we incurred in suing the insurance carriers while also reimbursing us for our costs in fighting the original lawsuit filed by Mr. Weiss. As part of this settlement, the insurance carriers also have agreed to provide us with legal counsel in the case against Mr. Weiss and to pay all our attorney fees in that case going forward. We're, we're very pleased we were able to achieve a good and fair settlement with the carriers that not only makes the association whole, but also helps ensure that this board of directors and future board members are protected against malicious and meritless lawsuits from Mr. Weiss in the future. If it was Mr. Weiss's intention to bankrupt the association or this board member with his groundless lawsuit, he has clearly failed. No question about it, this outcome represents a great victory over Elon Weiss and deserves a big round of applause. And with that, let's get the meeting started with the next item. I believe that's you, Gil, your treasurer's report?
Aren't you gonna, the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, the minutes, correct. The minutes. I need a motion to approve the August 25th regular meeting minutes and the corrected July 28th regular meeting minutes. Do you want your motion? Marcia made the motion, I'll second it. Is, we're also waiving the reading. Is there any discussion or objection? Hearing none, meeting minutes are approved. The next item now is Gil, your treasurer's report.
Okay, we'll begin with the treasurer's report. Financial statements came in, payroll came under budget, $35,366. Total main business is under budget, $60,000. Year-to-date, we're under budget for $35,366. So that's the bottom line as far as your actual towards your year-to-date budget. So we're in black. Okay. Moving on, okay. We had an issue with the former landscaping that we used to have. They abandoned us. They never showed up to perform the work. So we had to literally go out and solicit bids from different companies to be able to get our property, you know, back on the well-groomed side. I'm happy to say that the proposals that we received, there was a company that used to work for you like six years ago, for six years, Creative North, which they came out as an emergency cut on a Saturday and they did a pretty thorough and satisfactory job for the property. You have also seen, you're starting to see the tree trimming that is taking place across the community, the difference, I don't think, I believe, I was here six years ago, I think you've done it once. The trees were so overgrown, besides getting the citation from City of Lauderdale for hurricane preparedness reasons, that was something that needed to be done desperately. I've been recommending since I got here and we finally, this same company is performing the same landscaping slash tree trimming. And they also reported after they inspected the property, as far as there was a huge infestation of white flies. They affect mainly the ficus, don't eat them alive. You see, you see some corpse of ficus throughout the property. And besides that, you have the, what's called a ching-ching bug, which infested like 25% of your other plants around the community. So proposal was obtained to treat the white fly, obviously, and they did ching-ching for free. So we were seeing, we should see going forward a major improvement in the landscaping as far as the aesthetics of it and the health of the plants themselves. Because this is something that needs to be done twice a year to be able to prevent any type of infestation going forward. It is one of the biggest investments you have in the property. Just to give you an idea, the oak trees that you have here, those 20,000, 30,000 trees, dollars for one tree. So you have a pretty good investment in your landscaping. So anything that we can do proactive to keep maintaining and prolong the life of the, I call it the forest that you have here. But you should be in good hands. You should be in good hands going forward and we look forward to, you know, a good relationship like we had with them for three years, from my understanding. So they're a proven contractor. We did solicit several bids, but they were, they're the ones who were highly recommended and so far from their business and they're, they're still in the property tree trimming as we speak. We did receive from our collection efforts, we received title to E1L, which is a two-bedroom, and we're in the process of cleaning it up, patching it up before we can proceed to rent it and, you know, income for the association. Z2R has been rented already from last month, third report. So you got income, you got $800 coming from that particular property. And maintenance is like 80%. There was an abandoned unit, G3B as a victor, that was abandoned for over a year. It was, at that time, it was being repaired, but we had to do, maintenance is doing, is due diligence and we have like 80% of the unit already completed and we foresee having it by next month, ready to be rented. And it's a, it's a two-bedroom also, so it's a good income. Talking about good income, we received $8,514 from the VTM's, from the laundry equipment that we were talking, just, that's what we're talking about. That's another $8,514. That's more than, though, that we were getting from Exxon before. So it was a wise, very wise, wise decision, the board made of buying your own equipment because that, that was a no-brainer. So you, it's paying that as now.
One year.
That's a no-brainer. Mr. IT department, he's working on the Nottingham, installing the security cameras. We still have three to go after that to finish with the camera installation project. My recommendations, tree trimming. It's already been obtained, so it's up to the board to be able to ratify whatever decisions they want to make as far as contracts. So I pass it upon.
And Gil, well, after, could you give us the summary of the financials?
I already did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it. Could you repeat that? I was looking at something.
Bottom line, you're under budget for year-to-date, $35,366.
Do you have the monthly, the monthly figure?
Monthly, sometimes your head, sometimes your behind.
So it was negligible for the month?
Yes.
Okay.
But you gotta look at the big picture now.
Okay, I got it. I think I just missed the monthly. Okay, good. So next item, sales and lease report?
Hello, I think it's better now. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, board. All right, so my sales and lease report for the period that closed on September 15th, 2015. I'm gonna start with the leases. We received 14 leases that were processed from August 14th to September 15th. B2U, one bedroom, is, was rented for 900. G1C, two-bedroom, for 1300, was approved. M1M, inefficiency, for 750, was approved. M1U, one-bedroom, 900, approved. M2K, one-bedroom, 980, approved. M3G, one-bedroom, 850, it was declined. M2L, two-bedroom, 1,175, approved. O3B, one-bedroom, for 900, declined. O3K, one-bedroom, 850, approved. S1M, efficiency, 900, approved. S1W, two-bedroom, I'm sorry, yes. S1W, two-bedroom, 1,048, approved. SY1W, two-bedroom, 1,200, approved. Z3R, which is ours, this is studio that is being rented for $800 and is obviously approved. We had two roll of leases which both were declined, E1X and I1D for the period. And then the purchases, we received eight purchases that were processed and all declined. All of these purchases were cash. B2C, which we were finally able to, to sell the unit, surely we're gonna have to close in on that unit, okay? It was sold for $76,000 cash deal. Yeah, that's a good deal. That's our unit, we are selling the unit. G2F, one-bedroom, wow, $84,000. G2F, one-bedroom, wow, $84,600 cash. That's right, I3, I3B, two-bedroom, for $77,000. M3Q, one-bedroom, $55,000.